I call the Dixon County Commission to order the October 27th meeting 2016. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no additions to our agenda today, so I move that we approve their agenda as printed.
Second.
Then move seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda are the amendments of the October 20th work session at regular meeting and a KDHE wire payment of $113,782.42.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Seconding.
Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on it? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Before we do our commissioners' comments, we have three guests with us today, and I'll ask for each one of you to stand and state your name and what class that you are participating in.
I'm Skylar Roper, and this is the class for government.
I'm Dave Frazier, and this is also a class for government.
I'm Sidney Volker, and this is storage.
Are you students at Ableen or...
Yeah.
Paul from Ableen?
Yeah.
So what do they have you do actually on this? What kind of report do you have to fill out?
There's like a paper with boxes, which is like, fill out the census boxes. It just says like, describe, and then she discussed the meeting. Yeah, just fill out the boxes. And then you gotta get something to add to it.
Let me ask you the question, and which way do you want to answer? What do you think the county commissioner's responsibilities are?
Since he already spoke, we gotta let one of the others.
(laughing). I said, "No, I'm gonna answer that one."
What was the question? Sorry.
(laughing). What are the duties and responsibilities of county commissioner?
To approve of things.
What, approve of what things?
Things that the civilians assess very good. Come on.
What are the responsibilities of the county? Well, we were trying to educate you on that a little bit this morning in our commissioner's comments of why there is a county commission and what our responsibilities are, so...
What services does the county provide? I guess that'd be more, you know, what services does the county provide? Ambulance service?
What?
Ambulance services, EMS?
No, our county.
Okay. 911?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Health department? Yes? Road and bridges?
Jail.
Jail?
Tags? Where do you buy your tag at? Or you haven't bought one yet?
You get your driver's license where you come to get it.
Well, and some of this, I think, will be helpful on our agenda today because we're looking at bids on an ambulance, and we have some, we'll have some discussion on some of the storm cleanup. And I think that is something, you kind of assume, people drive by this building all the time, and it's not just the roads and bridges within the county, we're one of the local type governments compared to state or federal. But when you drive by here, you think of the services that sometimes aren't provided as far as your driver's license, and once you, you all drive, I imagine, did any of you have to buy your tag? Or did your mom or your dad maybe bought it or something like that? A lot of times, you know, you don't think about it at that age. I mean, I never, when I was in high school, because the tag was already on there, but my dad had gone down to the county office and bought the tag, and when he did that, he had to show proof of insurance and some of those things. And so, you know, that's one of those areas you just kind of, it gets taken care of, but once you have to start paying for that yourself, then you start paying a little bit more attention to it, so. Anyway, it's nice to have you here today.
Okay, I have government workers, I'm not getting too much off.
Oh, you don't have all that?
No. How many of you go to the fair? Central Kansas Fair. How many of you have funded? Counting. So if you need a ride in name, Mr. Holm here will be willing to set you up for a nameless ride, and if you need money, helping them budget, J.D.'s our financial.
But to carry it back further, Craig has mentioned how is this paid for? But then, you know, where do we get the money for that? And mainly, it's property tax, but we do get some sales tax, and a lot of that money goes to the state of Kansas, and then they feed that back to the individual counties and to the individual cities. So that's a little bit of the money trail of where that goes. So when you go through McDonald's and, you know, spend your dollar for a Coke, they add sales tax to that, and eventually, some of that ends up with the cities or it ends up with the county. So there's your economic lessons, your small ones.
Well, then, we're gonna continue on with that, though.
Oh, no. I've already, that's the last I'm gonna say, so...
I gotta have the last one here.
Craig's gonna have the last one.
What do you think the county's budget is? How much do we spend? Everybody, I mean, a lot. Five million? 10 million? 20 million?
Probably at least 25 million.
20?
5, well.
25? Well, see, there. We need you on our committee, then, because we don't spend that much. About 18.1 million is what the budget is for the county.
Each year.
Each year. Okay, I'm done.
I have one thing to add.
Oh, okay.
The county treasurer, though, collects the taxes for every entity, whether it's Harrington, Ableen, Solomon, the school district, or whatever. How much, just as a curiosity, can anybody tell us, how many dollars or guess, how many dollars goes through the courthouse on tax money every year for everybody in the county?
All the taxing units?
Schools.
Our budget's 18 million, just for the county.
Cemetery district.
Collects the taxes for everybody, and then she pays them out. Took a while, yes.
Like 90?
590? No. About 72 million dollars a year. I'm just kind of curious. Any for that?
Yeah.
Wonder about 79 taxing units?
91.
91, I couldn't remember that.
Well, we're gonna move on to commissioner comments.
I'm done.
Lynn, do you have any additional commissioner comments today?
Just that we had our legislative policy meeting on a conference call last Friday, and have kind of finalized, and we're gonna roll out what that legislative policy will be at our November meeting. And for county commissioners, that's all I have.
We will be attending, all three of us, November 1st, 6 o'clock in the evening, McPherson, where we meet semi-annually with the joining counties, so McPherson's hosting it this fall.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it. I'm taking one more time.
Our work session today, Randy Gaspin with Audit, will be doing our audit for 2015, and he was just into kind of get that process started. And I guess that's all I had. We move on to presentations, the petition, proclamation, and other public comments. I guess we have none today, so Brad, why don't you start with your update?
I reported a while back that we applied for a grant for TransCanada. We did get notice last week that the grant was just shy of $10,000 that we applied for. They did award us $5,000 towards that GIS project, and that was a project that had to do with both the, I'll use that term, the UAV that we have, and the software that would go along with that to migrate that into GIS so that it matches and the GPS coordinates and everything are the same. So we've got about half of that. I've turned back to Chancey and Sherry to look at that project now and determine how we could best use that money. So we haven't received the actual money yet, but we received notice that that's what the award is, and I'm assuming they'll be in the future to do a presentation to us, so. We did receive last week a thank you letter from Marge and John Chamberlain, and it says, "Thanks so much for mowing the roads and bitches on the north part of Hickson County, specifically 3400 Avenue and Rain Road. They look so nice and much, it's much easier to see the deer before it gets into the road. Thanks, John and Marge." So that was nice of them to send that. This morning, you met the new zoning administrator, which is Tim Hamilton. He started Monday, and we're glad to have him on staff, and he's hit the ground running at full speed. He's got plenty to do and keep up with, so excited about that. I also provided you a year-to-date spreadsheet that Janelle produced on the costs, revenues, and expenses of the justice of project from when we started, and we talked about that a little bit, so that's all I've got for right now.
Okay. Doug, did you have anything for us?
No, but thank you.
Okay. Notices and communications, only thing we had from NACO, and this is, we belong to the National Association of Counties, and that is an organization that nationwide looks after interests of counties, and this is our letter, our dues that we need to pay them. That's all we had in our notices and communications. Introduction and consideration of resolutions, which we have none today. The unfinished business, last week, we put off an item there, and that was to consider bids for a skid steer grapple attachment for the road and bridge department, so I think... Brad, why don't you explain that?
Okay, in your package, you've got a number of sheets there on bids, but I provided you a revised grapple bid. We went back after some concern last week, and Martin actually went out and looked at, physically looked at a couple of these that we felt like there may be concerns on, and in looking at it, there were a number of issues. One, primarily, the main one was whether or not the device would tilt properly to give over the height issues of our dump trucks, and the number, and the way it's built, too, because we're gonna, we've got one now that's just, I would say it's cheap, it's a smaller unit, just doesn't work, so. We know that this project's gonna be tough on the grapple, so anyhow, he did go back and look. Two of the three did not meet the original specs, and the number of tines, the thickness of the tines, and how heavy-duty they're built. The one that does meet is the one from Holland Industries, which is one of the two that he might have looked at, so.
Do you have copies of specs?
I do, yes.
I've never seen them.
Well, I haven't had a good shot on that one.
Well, I didn't know the specs that they wrote out. Not sure.
There's all three of them.
Well, I mean, what we put out for the bid spread, that's what I meant.
Oh, I do not have a copy of that. Well, yeah, I did, I did.
That's what I'm looking at, is what, you know, make sure everybody's getting on the same thing.
Yes. It's on the back of that. And a tally sheet. That's what we put out.
Okay.
And then on that, it's in handwriting, but we've got what each one of them, the comparison to, and there's the other two bids besides that one, so. A couple of priorities that Martin put on the bids were the thickness of the tines, the number of tines, and the height. And the height was probably the most critical aspect because we needed, they wanted it to be tall enough so when they're pushing that brush, it doesn't go over top of the, over top of the grapple and break the windshield. We've actually broken the one windshield on our existing skid steer because of that issue, so we wanted it to be at least 65 inches tall. And they felt like that was a priority, so, as well as how heavy-duty and thick the tines and stuff are.
What I'm seeing here is like the claw width, they're all the same, then. What, I mean, what you wrote in here, Brad?
The...
I mean, you know, the only thing would have been a variance, the difference, what I was referring to.
The tine thickness?
Well, no, but I mean, they're all the same, but it's like here, 21 inches.
Yeah, yeah, those are all the same, yeah, yeah. Unless we've got the, unless we've got the dimension written in there, they all do meet.
Right.
I think there were like three factors that they didn't meet specs on.
Right, okay.
Which happened to be the most important aspects that we were looking at, so.
Did you, did Chancey like those?
Yeah.
And I know he went out to Holland yesterday and actually put theirs on a skid steer, and they raised it up to measure to make sure everything would function properly, so. With that, it's our recommendation that we purchase the one that meets specs from Holland Industries.
And they do mention in their letter that they have one in stock, ready to be delivered?
Well, I think they do, however, one of the concessions they also made when Martin was talking to them was they're gonna, they would build one, and they would actually put a D-ring on the top of it for us, something Martin said they'd like to have, so it could, they could hook on to trees and stuff with that D-ring and pull them back out of the piles of debris. And then they were also gonna attach a screen that goes up a little higher to protect the skid steer, and they would do that at no cost, under their bid price, so. Those weren't, those two deep things weren't in the specs, but from Martin meeting with them and talking to them, they agreed to do that at the same bid price. So I think they're gonna be building one. It'll take them about three weeks to do it, so. Which is still within our timeframe to be able to do the project, so. And I think that's kind of one of the benefits of using a local company, be able to get those little extras put on it, so. Does come with the warranty of it. If we do have problems with it, then we can take it right back and have it repaired under the warning, so.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we use Holland Industries. They're, they do meet the specs, and what you've given us information-wise, their bid 4,495 for the track load grapple bid.
Do you want to go ahead and second it? I'll second it. I am gonna abstain from the vote because, like I say, I do have relation there, so. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
I was just, I mean, just a matter of flushing it out, is there, is there a concern, Craig, that you have or anything that's something I'm missing on it?
No, no.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure Laverne mentioned it would be a conflict, you know, I mean, there was a problem that should have been mentioned before, that...
Well, like I say, I am gonna abstain from the vote. So Rick, ready, any more discussion, ready to vote? All in favor of purchasing the skid steer from Holland Industries, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, moving on to other business. Consider appointment of Levita Montgomery to the Central Kansas Mental Health Board. And I guess, Lynn, you can clear.
Yeah, we have a vacancy that beginning January 1 with Sheila Biggs stepping down, and I've contacted Levita. Levita just retired from as Deputy Director of the Health Department and has more than enough qualifications, and I personally believe would be an excellent member to be on that board, and I've contacted her, and she is willing to serve in that capacity, so. And I think from what Lynn said, it would be beneficial to have her attend a couple meetings here in the next month, and kind of get a feel for what's going on.
Well, when I visited with them at Central Kansas Mental Health, Kathy Moser's the director, and I think what she's gonna do is approach her and keep it optional if she wants to attend a meeting, even though we had that discussion, but at least let her have the, you know, send her the minutes and kind of a briefing and overview. And one of the things that's helpful on this is Sheila Biggs is, I think, maybe over 10 years has been on this board, and she just wanted it to be a smooth transition because she has plans after the first of the year. So it was just like, you know, let's get this taken care of a few months in advance, and we aren't as much in limbo. And then, as Brad said, Levita does bring, you know, experience in healthcare, and so really will be a great benefit. And as you know, this board is, we have two representatives from Dixon County, and then Sleen County has, I believe, three or four representatives. Ellsworth and one, Lincoln County each have one representative, but it's a regional-type effort. So I would go ahead and make the motion that we do appointment of Levita Montgomery to the Central Kansas Mental Health Board.
Seconding.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor. Any more discussion on that? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Designate a voting delegate and an alternate for the K-Camp at our K-Camp annual meetings.
Do you have a recommendation there? It's all filled in.
Well, it's all filled in, so you can read it, Lynn.
Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion for the certified voting delegate that we have, Laverne Meyer, County Commissioner, for that position, and then also the alternate would be myself, Lynn Peterson.
Seconding.
That we do that.
Seconding.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Okay. The next item we have is to review and consider bids to lease a skid steer, and Brad, why don't you kind of explain? I think we got the sheet here on that.
Yeah, you've got a sheet that details that. We, with the EWP project and cleaning up the debris that was left in the stream beds from the May 25 tornado, we will need, for us to be able to do 25% of it to make our match in any kind, we're gonna need a second track, track skid steer, first track loader. As you know, we currently lease one, municipal lease from White Star for a Bobcat. This is the second one that we would lease. The second one isn't quite as cheap as the first one, it's a couple thousand dollars more, but it's still a manual lease for the machinery with unlimited hours, and the award comes on them, and similar to the grapple, we'll be able to take the cost of the machine, the hours, and use, that we'll use throughout the next few months as far as any kind off of our expenses, so. But then, well, in this particular case, we'll get the benefit of keeping it for a full year use or after that.
So we would get to keep it for next year up to this date?
After we get the hourly rate, then we follow the FEMA rates, of course, but I think this is like $26 an hour.
I think so, yes.
For every hour it's used, we give credit towards our project, so.
What did the other one, the lease on the other one?
September, we just signed the lease on it.
Okay.
Of course, it will be used by the other crew.
Right, I know. I was just thinking, you know, so we could have them both turn up, so, you know, it lasted until, we wouldn't renew the other one until like May or April, you know, so we, you know, could keep this one and spread the payment out a little more when we didn't need it so much, or nothing more's to that issue.
And there's a number of projects where Martin says that during a normal year, that we use two of them, so. We do have that trailer that we bought earlier this year, but all both of them, so. But at any rate, the two bids were received. We sent it out to five vendors, three of which did not submit bids, and they normally develop under the municipal lease program. White Star Machinery did submit theirs at $8,681.93, and then Van Capital Company submitted one for a used track loader for $10,500. The White Star would be a brand-new Bobcat, as they normally write it, so. It's our recommendation that we go ahead and lease that T-740 from White Star for the next year, be able to do the EWP project.
So move the recommendation by our county administrator for $8,681.93?
Second. Been moved and seconded, any more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Okay. John, we're getting down to you now to consider the ambulance bids.
You do, Devin, you're back at the report, the junk that Chris put in. We'll get saved the big one for the last.
Yeah.
Well, after spending several hours of mulling over those few plans, and I kind of went through them, just a simple pros and cons on one truck over the other. Obviously, the specifications that we submitted, all of you've seen those before we sent them out, were based upon our current truck, or our last truck that we built, which was a 2015 freightliner that we bought a couple of years ago. That company was one that submitted a bid. The other company was Osage out of Missouri, submitted the other bid. We've never had an Osage ambulance. We build the ambulance, it's our specifications, obviously, and most people do, they're not a cookie-cutter thing, so they put cabinets where you want them and build them how you want them. So in reviewing both of those bids, really looking hard at the Osage bid, simply because it's a different manufacturer and probably does stuff different than what the other provider does. On the second sheet, we'll start with Osage at the top. In their bid, they did say a 180-day build time, which was a pro for them, the other truck was a little longer to build it. However, they did put a caveat on there, depending on availability of chests, so, you know, I think you're talking a 40-day difference there, but that could vary, so. Irregardless of either truck, we're talking May, June, juni ship next year, if we give them the okay today to start the process, so, before it would be prepared for delivery. Closer location for pickup, obviously, they're located in Missouri, the other manufacturer is in Ohio, so they're a little closer for that, that's not a huge issue, but that was the pro. Cause to that, the Osage uses all wood for their cabinetry in the back, which, that was the standard for years with Formica covering on it. The other manufacturer does aluminum cabinetry, and for durability, if they get wet or whatever, you don't have issues with that. So that was kind of a con. Wheel and lights is what they bid. Our current truck has wheel and lights, but there is a, we did bid a different type of light that is about half the cost of a wheel and light, so they did bid wheel and lights in theirs. The way they configure their trucks, and I think we discussed this before, is whether you shoot all your heat and air from the front of the box or whether you put it down on the side. This last truck we bought all... This last truck, we bought all of our other trucks, except the last one does shoot it from the back. And last time we did it, we said, well, let's try running down the side with it. Our sales are up at that time, convinced us that we're gonna get, you know, better, better heating and air conditioning doing that, and it certainly is. I mean, that box on that truck heats and cools much faster than does the pushing all the air from the front. That's not an option with O-Sage, so the, the air would all come and heat would come from being pushed up from the front, so. We, we took that as a con. Box not constructed by O-Sage. A company contracts with another subcontractor to build the box and then they move it. I mean, they're in close proximity, but it's not the same company that builds and welds the box together. And we kind of took that as a con. Non-transferable warranty, that's really not a huge issue, but, but they won't, if we would decide to sell it to somebody else, then all warranties end with us selling it, so the new purchaser wouldn't get any warranty with it. Another con is we don't have any history with that. However, I know people that have purchased O-Sage ambulances and, and they seem to work okay. Salina is probably the closest one that, that does, so. And with the Horton truck, they have a hop, they call it a hop system, which is integrated airbags in the back of the truck to help the attendant, should they get in a crash, from getting hurt. They're the only ambulance manufacturer that does that. It's standard. It's not an additional cost. And obviously, this O-Sage ambulance does not provide that even an option, so. Horton, now let me back up to O-Sage. They did, it was, it was kind of different. You can look through it, but they did in the, in the place where it talked about differences and obviously, all the ambulance manufacturers know each other and when you build specs or throw specs out there, they can tell simply by how the construction is, what you're bidding. So they know what brand it is when they, and, you know, they come out and said, well, obviously, the specs are built for a Horton ambulance. We don't build like Horton does, so our specs may vary. Well, that was a wide open statement. And then they went down on all the individual things and just checked everything yes. Even the airbag system, they checked yes. So I guess their sys, their, their, what they said upfront, they felt maybe covered that. Because they said, well, we don't build to their specs, so they may vary. So they did in a lot of places and that's one. So, uh, down on Horton, the pros, we have a history of two currents. Horton ambulances, our last two, we've bought from them in twelve and in fifteen. They, they work well with Andy and on getting parts. If we need parts out of the dealership in Texas, he calls them up and they get us any parts that we need for that. Well, that we've not had any structure issues, so they, they, is a solid built structure on the box itself. And as you remember, our hopes is after this time, actually, to get the remounts rather than, at least one time, rather than totally rebuilding that box and truck. So this is our last non-remountable box that we got left. So next time we come in, we'll be talking about taking the box off and refurbishing it and putting it on a new chassis, so. Which, which will save us some money. So looking down the road, if we want a box, the structure's gonna be able to last twenty years. We want one that's gonna last and, and I think that, that's huge. They do have remount service available, so when comes up time, we can remount. I think it's probably wise to try to remount with a reputable company that's, you know, preferably the company that built them in the first place. I think you got less problems with, you know, them knowing how to match up a new chassis to the, to the old box and that sort of thing. They do have an teleplex system, which is a fully computerized. It tells you all the data up on the, it's got a screen up front that tells you all the data. Should you have a light out or something not working, functioning properly, it comes up, much like new cars do, which the other did not. We mentioned the patient airbag system, patient compartment airbag system. All metal cabinets, no wood products. We talked about the side duct HVAC system. It also does have a Cooltech mounted AC condenser, so that means the condenser and condenser fans are up on the roof. That's something new that they do, only they do it. Previously, either had it hanging on the top of the box up front, which you had to eliminate some of your lights because you had a big condenser box hanging up there. Or you had it underneath. Well, you've always put it underneath up until last time. Underneath, it's not, we've never had any issue with it, but it does generate more heat from underneath and not able to disperse heat out as well. But now they start putting them on the roof, this last one, we've not had any problem with five little fans across the front of the roof. That they build a pocket or tray and for, so it's worked well. And they do extensive crash testing on their trucks and safety's a big issue with them, so we put that down as a plus. Con is two hundred and twenty-day bid over the other one. Again, that's kind of norm for the industry. And I would challenge that, that, my guess is O-Sage would be closer to that, too, so. So, with that all being said, I certainly don't want to take any questions that you have. Obviously, the bid prices are there. And so I would, I would recommend that we, that we go with the low bid or the Horton, which matches what we currently have and are happy with for for that price.
I, one question, John. The ones we've got now, the two thousand twelve, two thousand fifteen. You know, you say remounting. I mean, this is down the road. Any idea what that's gonna cost?
I mean, the big. You know, I don't.
Say your bid if you want to know. I mean, that's what I'm.
You know, a lot of it depends upon the condition when we get to that, how far, I mean, we take really good care of our stuff.
Right.
But if they have to strip it down and replace linoleum and upholstery and it's just how far they need to go.
That's what, more than, it's kind of a refurbishing, remounting then. Okay.
The, the, you know, they can strip it clear down and it's all you got's the box.
I just think we have to go to that.
No, I, I hope we don't. And that's one thing, you know, you look at those metal cabinets versus wood cabinets and stuff like that. I mean, they need to, they can just gut the hole inside and go back. I mean, but I'm hoping we wouldn't have to do that with that particular brand. We could, we could do without that now. The two that we'll get into before that are Lifeline trucks built out of Iowa. That's the oh-eight and oh-nine truck that'll come up next, that are not built by Horton. And they do have wood cabinets and stuff in them, so. But again, they're pretty good shapes, so. And the floors are pretty good shape. We'll have to look at the, if there's any tears or stuff, and that's gonna happen over time.
Well, yeah, see where it's at.
But they'll, nothing else. They strip it down and they repaint the whole outside, obviously, so the paint always matches the truck and, and I would say conservatively, you'll save twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars over doing it all, so.
This is, this is not had envy with this, but when we expect them to say, well, is it coming in? I mean, how many miles do you put on or, you know, before?
When that truck, when that truck gets in.
I mean, the ones we got now, the two oh nine?
We're, we're hoping one eighty, one ninety on them, on these medium-duty trucks. The one we're replacing is not a medium-duty. It's one of the old van chassis. And it's got about a hundred and thirty thousand miles on it now, so. It's, and that's about where we were replacing those. Obviously, we've got six months here to go or seven, eight with it yet, so.
Are they freight liners, the ones you got, the two older ones?
The last one we bought was a freight liner.
The two, the two oh nine and the two eleven?
No, they're the old Chevy C forty-five hundred chassis, which you can no longer get. Oh-nine was the last year Chevy made those. And they're not available anymore, so. So we'll have to convert those to, you know, we've got along well with the freight liner. I can't say that for the international that we, that we bought in twelve. Again, no fault of, of Horton, but there's been a lot of international issues with that truck, so.
And you can spec out what you want, a freight liner or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the chassis underneath is spec out, so. And there's not a whole lot of difference in price with those.
Right.
But international, come out with a medium, a light, medium-duty chassis to, to try to capture that C forty-five hundred market when Chevy quit doing it. And they put it out really fast to capture that and they had a lot of problems. And we got stuck within that. Us, Salina, McPherson, Fort Riley, all have one. Ours went to the shop as soon as I drove it back and I had lights coming on when I got back. Thankfully, just when I got to Manhattan, but. So it went to the international Salina as soon as we got it, so. And it's been there multiple times, so. And when I took ours out, McPherson was sitting there with theirs, so.
Well.
Salina's had some issues.
These freight liner trucks probably are heavier duty.
They are, and it's a, you know, brakes last long. I mean, it's, you know, there's a lot of them do the, the lighter, lighter trucks, but they're just like the van we got. They're overweight when you get them and, and they just don't last.
Get what you pay for.
You get what you pay for. And it is, right. But, you know, my biggest concern about going to the larger trucks was, you know, we have people varying abilities of, or history of abilities with driving large vehicles, but have not had really any problems with that at all. We have a driving course they have to go through, class they have to go through, emergency vehicle driving. Really have not had any real issues with them running over anything or anybody. Not gonna win so far, so it's not been an issue that I thought it might be, so.
Okay. Any other questions before we vote on this?
You guys are certainly welcome if you want to review these books.
We trust your opinion. Your opinion is probably, your expertise is much better than what ours would be looking at those kind of things.
Good to leave them with Janelle to look at.
Some bedtime reading there.
Okay. Are we ready to consider the endless bids?
I appreciate all the work that you've done on this and it's, you know, certainly important for the county and this is kind of for the benefit of the high school students, but do you want to just, in a minute, say how many people work there at the EMS and what's?
Okay, sure.
Just a quick, quick, quick overview.
We have twenty full-time people in our department. That includes eighteen, or twenty-one, I guess. It includes eighteen staff people that, that work on the ambulance. We have three crews on all the time. There's two crews at Abilene and one down in Harrington. So we have a total of five trucks, but two of those are spare trucks. So we man three trucks all the time. The, uh, we run about twenty-two, twenty-three hundred calls a year, so. That's emergency calls, all the air facility transfers, so we take transfers out of, out of both Harrington Hospital and Abilene Hospital. So that, all of that keeps our guys pretty busy. Then we have myself and Assistant Director, and also I have a billing person that is billing. We, we do bill for, for our services, bill patients' insurance for our services. What we bill for our services doesn't cover the total cost of ambulance service for the county, so it's up to the county commissioners to decide how much tax money goes to support ambulance versus user fees. And that's always kind of a delicate balance because how much of our, how much of our cost do you put on the taxpayers versus how much do you put on the users? And understanding that, that if you put it on the taxpayers, you spread the cost over everybody regardless of whether you're a user or not. And the high user fee only, or the user fee only goes to those people who use our services, so. But a lot of those people that are users of the service are, are people that are, older people, probably more prevalent to be a user than, than the younger people are, unless you're having an accident or something. And a lot of those people are on fixed incomes and it's difficult for them maybe to, to to absorb a high user cost, so. So that's the balance that commissioners have to decide, is how much of our cost is, gets divided out between the taxpayers and the users, so. We're just concerned about that, so. But that's where, we'll pick people up and we'll take you wherever you want to go with regards to our location. Obviously, we're not gonna take you to San Diego as a hospital initially, but, but we will take you outside of the county, to Salina or Junction or Manhattan, if that's where your doctor, she goes, if your condition allows that, so.
Okay. Thank you. I'll go ahead and make the motion that we do take the recommendation for the professional ambulance representing Horton. And that's for twenty seventeen freight liner ambulance and the total bid price is two hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Seconding.
Been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, John.
And I guess that'll probably lease purchase like we've done the other side, I guess.
I'd move we adjourn.
Seconding.
Been moved and seconded, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See, I got a gavel, too.